Martin.
Here.
Burkhardt.
Here.
Coke.
Here.
Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Welcome everyone that is in the audience for this evening. I have here an item that's on the agenda. We'd ask people with that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you prefer an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity of public communications to address the council. Yes, item on the agenda is the point of allegiance. And.
We can have either of us.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Do we have any changes to be done this evening?
Just the removal of item three E.
I'm sorry Cindy.
The removal of item three E.
Any other changes Cindy?
Not that I'm aware of.
That changed, we have a motion for approval on the agenda.
Someone right here.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam Ball please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coke.
Yes.
Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes, motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we have a couple of listed public communications this evening. And that is a couple of proclamations. First is the Fire Prevention Week October 8 through 14, 2023 proclamation. Tim, did you want to come up and make any comments or do you want to just come up while I read it?
Just go up whatever.
Again, it is the Fire Prevention Week October 8 through 14, 2023 proclamation. Whereas the city of Johnson is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those looking in and visiting our city. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at great risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments responded to more than 166,000 home fires annually between 2016 and 2020. And whereas two of every five home fires start in a kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas Johnson residents should turn hot candles put back on the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven, and other things if they get hot, watch what they eat, and set a timer to remind them that they are cooking. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms have the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas Johnson fire firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Johnson residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention. It effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I volunteer as mayor of the city of Johnson to hereby proclaim October 18 through the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all residents of Johnson to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2023 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Johnson Parks Metropolitan Fire Department. And I'm going to leave it at that. Do you want to add anything?
No, I just said fortunately, some of the last few fires that we've had, digit fires, have been apartments that have been sprinkled, and so the sprinklers would put them out pretty quickly. But most residential homes do not have sprinklers, and so that same fire would cause much more damage.
So it's a good idea to most micro again microwave. And the second proclamation that we have this evening is Community Planning Month. Again, this proclamation is titled Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their communities. And whereas the whole benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and planning implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas like American Planning Association, whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and planning implementation made to the quality of our settlements and environment. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of our citizen planners, including members of the City Council, Planning and zoning commission, and board of adjustment, who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Johnson, Iowa. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional planners of the city of Johnson and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, it is resolved that the month of October 2023 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city in conjunction with a celebration of the National Community Planning Month. And again, I have signed the date. David, you're the director of our community development department.
Thank you. We like to recommend this every year just to highlight the importance of planning ads on our community, obviously. But redevelopment plans along Raleigh Road are drafted before the plan. Well, this last year we adopted a tighter thinking on the construction. Usually.
You don't have to get.
No extraneous but for many of you. So we like to, you know, bring recognition to those planning initiatives. And also, as I say, thank you to the mayor of the council and as brought on me, the planning and design commission. And whoever else wants to do it. All dedicate a lot of time to make our community very place.
Well, we quickly walked out of our community planning department. We have made some incredible progress over the last 20 years. And we're in the other direction, but we can see the results of a good planning. You as well, we appreciate it. With that, we've taken care of the scheduled public communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is on the agenda? Would you come forward and introduce yourselves?
My name is Julie. I reside at 10090 Le Canapé Le Croy. I'm a actual shaper, 601 Hotters Drive. Thank you so much for having us. I'm the new executive director to my children's museum. And I'm the main former meeting events director. The children's museum is located at Navarre West Mall, the lower level. We've been around for a second year since now, Capit. And we wanted to come here tonight and just kind of introduce ourselves and invite you all to come in with it too. Sorry, we really should have this before. You're fine. We think we have the best jobs in the world because we work at the children's museum, which means that we get to play all the time. It's your own business work, and then we get to go out there and some of the things, get to all the fun and stuff like that. But what's more important about that is that like kids will learn through play. We're not just a fun experiment, but experience and entertainment. Our mission is to build the foundation of life on learning through the power of play. And that is how children learn best.
You go ahead. You take your time.
One of the things that the children learn when they're playing, not only can you have like, you know, two plus two equals four and the alphabet, and like if I was much more fun, is the executive function skill. That's like your working memory, that's your being able to be creative, that's being able to be flexible. It's just, it's like how to manage your emotions and stuff. And that's how, when you got your youngest, we're like, no, we have infants all the way to, I would say, five-year-olds every single day. You know, we have outrage on the summers and breaks and stuff, but we see infants all the way to five-year-olds every single day. And they really do learn how to, you know, function and be awesome person at our place. So here's the agenda. Um, I'm sorry. And if you haven't had a chance with us, well, you have 5,010 people from Johnson come and visit. Now, I can't say that they're individual visitors, there might be one person that can do that many times. That would be a thing. But we have also been doing this around here that talks all about our number since 2022, being at 65,529. And then on the back, it's all sorts of interesting things that we are doing here or having growth here. And we love Johnson because I have special bits in my heart, and we don't have the address of Johnson. You guys, when we reached out back in 2017, we were like, hey, we're on Capit, we're going to start a children's museum, and we'd like to bring three kids activities. Somebody came out back, and you guys were our first meeting, and we went to, and they were like, oh, Johnson Green Days. And then they showed us the barn, some of the barn, and they're like, can you build this whole space of kids up? You guys, we couldn't at that time, and we were like, yes, we can. That's a lot better. And we got our tools mainly and built this huge boat. And that made it that we had to buy a trailer and have our first one or anything. So we love working with Johnson in the past. And just wanted to show you guys to know that we exist, and we're doing well. And then we'd love you to come and visit. But if you ever want to come and have a tour, you don't have to make an appointment, but we will be there if you make an appointment. If not, our doors will be open and the people at the front desk will absolutely be like, oh yes, you know that, that people may come and ask for us. I'm so tired of talking so much.
Great, good job. So I just want to thank you for coming tonight. You know, maybe I knew back in 2017 that there was this children's museum, but I didn't remember that.
No, 2017, it's 2015, yeah, 2017. So I'm each other day. Like, we're only six years old. Yeah, we didn't have walls there. We did 32 community events, and you were the first one that signed us. They were like, oh yes, we went to work, I committed everything about Johnson, you know, so you can do that.
Well, several of us up here have grandkids.
Oh, they love it, yeah.
So we're glad to hear.
Yeah, probably not on that, but it's 1531 Valhalla Square, the lower level of the Valhalla Square.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all right, I hear you.
Thank you very much. Can I ask it first?
Yeah.
What's your mission?
Right now it's $6.81, 110, three foot infants, anyone over 10, sorry. But then we also, the city and museums for all, where you have a with or an PT card, you would show it with the $40, a manual, you just 110. And then. There's where part of the adventure passes with the library. So children are on our list of it, so people come in with adventure passes. We're really, really affordable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks again. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Now, we'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing for safety is on the authorization of loan and disbursement agreement and the issues issued notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder. An approval of resolution number 23-252 instituting proceedings to take action, additional action to the authorization of loan and disbursement agreement and issuance of not exceed $8,950,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes, the Little Beaver Creek Sanitary Sewer Extension Segment 2A project. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:18.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Proceeding by or take additional action to all for the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority for construction of the Little Beaver Creek Sanitary Sewer Segment 2A. The project consists of approximately 9,000 feet of 30-inch sanitary sewer. Segment 2A is part of the Johnson Capital Improvement Project to extend sanitary sewer to the northwest road. Construction loans for a not exceed amount of 3.5 million. The project is financed by a loan through the SRA Clean Water Program. With a low interest rate, and the city will only pay back a portion of the loan. So that would be for the green segment there. Really runs from the Cross Haven neighborhood there at the end of 100 Tree up to Camp, along the east side of Beaver Creek Golf Course and terminus there on Towne Drive.
One second question from Matt.
Here I do have one. Matt, I apologize, it is not actually regarding segment 2A, but it's regarding segment 2B. Can you enlighten me and tell me what a dual force main means? That dotted, black dotted line just north of where 2A ends?
Yeah, and segment B would be placing a dual force main for redundancy in the system, so you'll have, you'll lay two heights side by side where it goes underneath Beaver Creek.
Okay.
That way, if one of them breaks, we'll have a valve we can turn and be able to utilize the other pipe while we're repaired. That's what that does.
Okay. Any other questions from Matt? Is there a public hearing on this item? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? If not, close the public hearing at 7:21. We have a motion to approve resolution number 23-252.
So second.
We have a motion, a second discussion. Sam Ball please.
Coke.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, public hearing on the authorization of loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder. An approval of resolution number 23-253 instituting proceedings to take additional action with the authorization of loan and disbursement agreement and issuance of not to exceed 1.5 million dollars water revenue capital loan notes for the Little Beaver Creek Water Main Extension Segment B project. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:22.
This is very similar to the action B, just to have taken. This proceeding note is for the planning and design loan with the Iowa Finance Authority for the water main extension of segment B shown here on the map in blue. So this will run from County Drive, parallel along Highway 141, turn east on Road Drive, and then north on 100 Cat Court, terminating just east of 100 Cat Court on Highway 415 or Segway Road Drive. The planning and design loan is for a not exceed amount of 1.5 million dollars. The project is funded through the SRA Drinking Water Program. It is an interest-free loan. The planning and design loan will be moved into the construction loan in the future. We have any answer any questions?
Also, any questions from Matt?
Wait, is it just free loan?
Yeah, it's the planning and design loan is an interest-free loan up to three years.
Any other questions from that?
So this is the design only, not construction.
Correct.
So that's why, because I remember we had a closed session about kind of property purchase. So we're just in the design phase, so this is just something in the design part of construction.
Yeah, once we get the alignment, wait, Coke is working on that, I'll be back. Probably not at the second meeting, I'll go over our.
Any other questions, council? Is there a public hearing on this item? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? There are none. We have a motion to approve resolution number 23-253.
A move.
Okay. Motion and a second discussion. Sam Ball please.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coke.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4C, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 23-261, determining an area of the city that economic development and blighted area and if rehabilitation conservation redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such areas necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city. Designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting amendment number seven to the Northwest 62nd Avenue Urban Renewal Plan. We'll open this public hearing at 7:24. Yeah?
Good evening. The North 62nd Avenue Urban Renewal Plan dates back to 1998. First amendment to it, and they're proposing it seventh. Most recent was back in May 2023, we made some adjustments to various things, including what's added in that what's the public building analysis for the current point of radiation. As that design work has gone on, on projects, current scope, I'll exceed what was listed in Urban Renewal Plan. And so this amendment seven would simply mess the scope of that project to would expand the scope of that project to put a private project on $370,000 to set it to reflect the current process for the project. With that, if you have any answering questions, we did hold a complication meeting as required. Notice going out to the school board and full panel.
Other questions? None. This is a public hearing on this item. None. We have a motion to approve resolution number 23-261. A motion and a second discussion. Sam Ball please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coke.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. No, no. Motion and second discussion. Sam Ball please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coke.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, consider approval of resolution number 23-255, approving the architectural plans for K McEer Building Number Two located at 8601 Thomas Avenue.
Good evening. We have a front of us architectural plan for a 2,500 square foot structure at the northwest corner of Common 7 and Northwest 86th Street. This would be intended for additional child care states will bring our, here. The second is bringing the bring of child care. And in 2016, the site plan was approved and accounted for, they featured 2,500 square foot building. At that time, it was a vision to be filled by an additional child care facility. But all other site design components remain in compliance with the current zoning ordinance. No additional park required, no additional stormwater management required. Everything remains in compliance, and they just needed an act of architectural plan review and approval prior to construction of that 2,500 square foot building. That has been submitted. They are within the Wyndham Office Park P V, which does require that it adhere to the same requirements of the Northwest 86th Street corridor. Those no longer exist. Those were in our code factors, P V, those were originally written. However, the applicant is proposing to still adhere to those, which would be the 50% break increasing the roadways. So there's still a compliance there. In addition, they're complying with all of our class material requirements, so class A, class B, and class C materials. This has been in front of the planning and zoning commission. They have our amendment of approval. If I do believe to be a representative of the ownership, should you have any questions there? With that, happy to take any questions or go over the need.
I'll start. Questions for Clayton?
The plans you have probably, that's okay, if you want, what is, what is it right now?
Currently, there is the, just something, this one would go, and then this little green space off the south side of the building. But it's currently just vacant green space. It was always planned for this, uh, before this building, just hadn't been constructed yet.
Clayton, I have a question, a couple of questions actually. So you say that the plan for submitted only required architectural review. What about landscaping? Are you saying that, I mean, I'm looking at the site plan that was approved in 2016, and I'm also on Google Maps Street View, and there is no landscaping on 86th Street or on the other road from it. No street tree at all. Would that be the case if this was a new, new development coming to us, that we wouldn't require any landscaping there either?
If this was a new site plan submitted, there would be street tree requirement along Northwest 86th Street.
But it's not required in this case? If they got approval, what is it now? Seven years ago, they don't have to fulfill the current standard?
Why not? No, but David Minio. Why not? No, but David Minio, uh, looked to use our zoning administrator. And I think it could be required. Change, change code.
I, I, I think that we put those, you know, we updated our ordinances on landscape because we got quite a few comments that we weren't doing enough. So I would prefer to see street trees on both sides, but if it's only required on the one, I, I would like to, uh, make sure that you guys go through it and and if that is part of the requirements currently, I think that it should fulfill those. And set, my second question is, I looked on street maps again, or street view again. I noticed some dead material, um, to the north property line. So I'm assuming that we would also, if we're going to verify that this is compliant, they should still be compliant for landscaping, even if it was supposed to be planted in twenty sixteen, should be there.
Yes, standard procedure is prior to the issuance of a specific occupancy, we would go back and verify that the site is compliant with the approved site plan. Regarding the need for additional landscaping, uh, I would suggest that, uh, the resolution just be amended to, uh, address that provision sufficient for landscaping requirements of current zoning code.
I would like to add one more thing. You know, as a tree lady, um, if they're deficient on some of the landscaping on that north side, it seems to be pretty heavily screened and adequate to my, to my thought. If some of that deciduous material that died and needs to be replaced, I would say, and I suspect the council and the mayor would agree, that they have to pay for that material, they have to have it replaced to be compliant. But if they were to put it someplace along one of those three streets to go propping it, I think that that would be a good idea. Does that make sense?
I'm certainly following you there. The landscaping up along the north of site is, uh, required proper landscaping between residential, commercial domain. And in twenty sixteen, there was an alternative proper approved, which allowed for that. Normally, we can say that being placed within the fifty feet or within thirty feet, we did examine that, uh, within fifty feet, acknowledging all our extension base area. Placing them elsewhere on the site outside of that fifty feet would definitely be subject to city council approval of an alternative proper. Uh, because those are intended to be planted in that location to serve as that screen between residential, commercial businesses.
If I made, uh, uh, motion to add that we give look, uh, our community and regional planning group permission to, uh, make a judgment call in this case, would that be a help?
Before we get an answer to that, I guess I'd like to have Christine just come in on what we can acquire at this point. I want to make sure that whatever, whatever motion passes or whatever change we're making in the resolution, we can make really good.
It appears to me that this structure was included in the prior approved site plan back in twenty sixteen. Is that right, Clayton?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so normally if it's part of an approved site plan, you know, if they're building, the building that's consistent with that prior approved site plan can't really add new requirements, um, although if, if the architectural standards have changed and, and they're required to submit architectural plans, that would be subject to current review, but I don't know that we can do the same with landscaping. So my suggestion would be to approve the resolution subject to staff, you know, confirming landscaping requirements. That would be a little bit of a new dive. I don't know right now off the cuff whether or not we can require additional landscaping.
So my motion could be, as you say, to go ahead and approve it as it is uh, described now, with the understanding that after review, if it is discovered that additional landscaping can be required, we could allow the staff to make a judgment call on exactly where that landscaping goes to the benefit of, um, you know, the mayor.
It would be, if we determine.
If we could.
Additionally, if you require.
That's the resolution that that's when approved. A motion. Other questions, Clayton?
Okay. You mentioned that, um, there was no requirements for additional parking. Is that because when the original site was designed, it anticipated, uh, apartment, number parking slots were, it was built, sort of anticipated it was built and built. And thus, that's why there's no additional parking requirements.
That is, that's correct. It was assumed that it would be a detailed structure now that their facility, if we redo the map, protect it too, and it, they offset one another. In fact, there's actually less of a parking requirement than it was. Okay.
Other questions for Clayton? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask counsel this night?
Thank you. My name is Jerry Banks. By far, I own the building and lease to Kindercare. And, uh, we're, uh, committed to proper estate, whether it's required or not. We're very attentive to trees and so on, but we can only control north of what property we own. So if there are dead trees in the zone, we have more control on this. Aren't responsible for that. We will work with the, uh, building department to make sure it's properly, it's identified.
Great, thank you.
Back in consideration.
Any other questions, counsel? God, we have a motion to approve level two, question.
All right. Second.
Um, I want to amend that motion to include in the motion that if additional landscaping is required based on current codes, uh, after we had done the research that that may include it, and I also would like to make a, include in that motion that we give leeway to city staff to, um, make sure that they require landscaping is spread around the site or it's, it's the, um, surrounding market.
So Cope, do you accept that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. That's it.
Yep, agree.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Sam Ball, please.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven D, consider resolution of twenty-three dash two sixty-four, accepting a service contract with Waters Edge Aquatic Design Professional Services associated with conducting an aquatic recreation feasibility study for the city of Johnston. Tom?
Good evening. Um, typically with these types of service agreements, uh, we use these as a consent agenda. Item thirty-four was consent, but, uh, knowing how much discussion we've had in regards to aquatic studies and that, I felt like it was probably best to have a whole conversation in regards to this. This, uh, agreement with Waters Edge, um, basically will, will set up the foundation to allow us to move forward with an even more detailed, in-depth look at a potential aquatic center in, uh, in Johnston. So with this, it's, it's kind of three phases, um, as far as the approach goes. Uh, I won't say right upfront, the three phases, uh, the way they do this is they don't have a lot of public hate check initially with these phases because obviously when you start talking about these types of projects, you don't want to get too much excitement before, before you have the information out there. So, um, I think we all know the city of Johnston, they've been, several people have been asking for an aquatic center. So this study allows us to do a little bit of research before it fully goes out there public. So the phase is basically looks at the vision and marketing. The next thing about Waters Edge is they've done feasibility studies in metro area. They're currently doing a feasibility study for the city of Waukegan. They're probably halfway through that, that vision. It looks at the marketing analysis, so obviously we can't look at Johnston separate from other entities, uh, other communities around us, um, or metro area. So they really look at, okay, what is around us? How close are the largest aquatic centers? Are there the basic tub pools? Where are the splash pads located? How difficult is it to get, uh, people to these different locations? So, and we'll look at that. Within the needs, uh, analysis, which is phase two, it looks at site. So obviously, one size doesn't fit all, so they'll, they'll look at aquatic centers. Um, with basically regional versus local type aquatic centers. As I mentioned before, there are certain centers or certain communities that own with the tub tank pools, the pools that a lot of us come up in, um, back thirty, forty, fifty years ago. And then they're looking at, um, the potential of spreading around, um, splash pads around the community, if that an option. So as they look at that, they will analyze the costs associated with that. So they'll give us a kind of a price breakdown of the different options. What that looks like both on capital expense, but also on operational expense. So we'll look at what is the cost of operating aquatic center versus splash pads? What number of lifeguards are you going to be for these facilities to keep them open, like what that general cost would be? At the end, then they would give us a final report. So it would give a full spectrum of that, um, uh, what they, what they have discovered. Optional expenses that are in there, um, is that public engagement? Is bringing the public in really kind of getting a sense of, okay, if we do go out for a bond referendum, is this in the past? So that can also be a component of this. Once again, it doesn't have to be part of the initial phase, but it can be something. That is additional, um, concept of, uh, development. Basically creating two D, two, uh, level developments of what a facility would look like. So when I said that they'll give us ideas of aquatic center and all that, those are just conceptual, those are just right up on the paper, this would actually start looking at what those are. So we include parking lots, those types of things. Finally, if there's additional site visits, so if they need to physically go out to various sites to, to look at it, to look at the acreage, it's going to fit on this type of development site. Those are additional costs. So if we did, just went with the base package, that's twenty-one thousand nine hundred. That would give us the foundation to at least gain the knowledge of is this the right fit for Johnston, and if it is, what size are we looking for? You can see, uh, below the, the public engagement is fourteen to eighteen thousand. Concept development sixteen to twenty, and then at twenty-four hundred, basically, we're just sizes. We could set aside forty-five thousand for this, um, feasibility study, so obviously that twenty-one thousand nine hundred fits right into that. Um, and we'd have maybe some flexibility to move forward. As I said, this does not have public engagement initially unless we choose to. That would be the council prior, uh, prerogative if we wanted to do more. But it doesn't mean we don't have council and staff input into this, uh, process. So, uh, generally speaking, it takes about six to eight months for this process to go through the cycle and to develop a plan. With that, if you have any questions?
I'm sorry, questions for? So we started. Is this being proposed with twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars? Do they have any costing information?
Yes.
Give it, or it'll give us some idea.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, uh, if you look at the second page, um, it says prepare preliminary range of magnitude of project cost for development options. So that is a part of that twenty-one thousand nine hundred. So that's phase, describe that phase two. So it'll start giving you those ranges. It's just not going to be specific to the, this is the pool we're developing for you, here's your cost. It's going to give you, for instance, when I talked to Waukegan, they had a couple of different ranges that they were looking at. A local pool was in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty, it sounded between fifteen and twenty million for an aquatic, a whole aquatic center. For a large regional aquatic center, it's more in the eighteen to twenty-six thousand or twenty-six million. So it also starts tapping into operational space on the knowledge of knowing how many lifeguards you're going to need, how long you can stand in operation. So that's where the staff and the council do what would be, uh, required is they would need to know how long do you want to keep, so if it's a memorial, it will reiterate. As I think, uh, Councilman Reddy brought up, do we look at an indoor aquatic center to extend the, the season? So there's a lot of values that they can add to it based on our discussions.
Mayor asked a question and you referred to a document on this too, and, and we don't have that document. Uh, we only have the resolution up here. Can you at least distribute that if this passes? Can you at least distribute that so that they can see that? I had to fight all temptations not to raise for the trunks. Celebration of the John, I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Oh, damn.
And so I, I, I certainly am excited that we can totally move forward on this first step. And you're all welcome, but I didn't permit.
Thank you, yeah.
Any other questions for you? God, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash two sixty-four.
So move.
A motion and a second discussion. Sam Ball, please.
Cope?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven C, consider approval of plans in the amount of one ninety-eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. No approval?
Thank you.
Motion second discussion. Sam Ball, please.
Ready?
Yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Even on the city of Johnston, staff comments?
I do have a couple of comments. Um, Mulholland Road, Johnston Drive, the lane closures on Mulholland Road, South of Johnston Drive will be coming down in the next day or two. Um, but we will be shifting traffic on the east side of Mulholland Road there on Johnston Drive. We still have to put a median on that road, so we will be running traffic head to head in the north two bound, or the north lanes, so that will be coming. Schedule will be Thursday and Friday. We have talked to the adjacent business owners. Tomorrow will be, um, addressing some of the business owners that are south of Johnston Drive along Beaver Drive, and then reaching out to the concrete companies that are up north on Beaver Drive, Northwest Sixty-second. Um, that's coming, so there will likely still be some congestion through the intersection through the end of the week. But, uh, hopefully after that, we'll be done with our portion of the project. Minus some restoration. Uh, we had our sidewall meeting, um, for the Green Meadows West Neighborhood last weekend. It was well attended in full seconds. Had lots of great questions and good feedback, so I just wanted to let the council know how that went. Thank you.
Any other staff comments? No, or city council comments?
Um, a couple things. I don't know what I should be asking this of, but, uh, we had, uh, both council and Burkhardt and myself, and I'm sure all of us, have been asked about, um, coverage of the MetroNet uh, installation in Johnston. I mean, we had a lot of talk about it a year ago, or maybe this too. Um, and there are still some places that don't have service. So is there any way that we could get, ask the MetroNet for a current coverage map of the city of Johnston? And perhaps, uh, also some information on the areas that they haven't got to, whether they're still going to get there and in what timeframe, or whether they're years out from being, uh, expanding coverage? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, I can reach out to, uh, MetroNet contact here that, uh, Adam and I are working with and see if I can gather that information. see if I can gather that information and bring it back to you.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
And then I, I don't know if the mayor was going to talk about it, but we do have a meeting at two at Park, the 5:30 Wednesday, I think. Is it tomorrow? So just letting people know that they're interested in that park, meaning with the park board and the community on the improvement that's being brought. That's all that.
Burkhardt?
Matt, if possible, would you mind talking now to our other internet providers within the community to see if we can kind of get an overlay, or maybe make our own net, or they provide their coverage maps? CenturyLink or whatever they now call it, MediaCom as well. I, I really would like to get a better grip on really where we stand broadband initially, city itself. My other comment is, is just a very brief one, but incredibly sincere, and that is, city staff, you continue to amazingly evolve your dedication and appearances at different events, and certainly your support of all that goes on in this community. We survived a great homecoming a couple of weeks back, where we've had several parks and, or movies in the yard since then, and lots of other activities in between. We've always done such great things. We hosted nonprofits for walks and different things in the last couple of days. It's just phenomenal, all that you give to this community, and I'm so grateful for it.
Samuel?
I just want to pass on, weeks ago, we just had a very, we had Cedar Rapids, and Teresa introduced me to Jimmy Warren, who is the mayor of Sigourney, and also the son-in-law of Johnston, resident, former Johnston resident, Ray Schloss, Ray Schloss Park. And so I had a very nice visit with him. And told him that he should definitely, except for his wife, or intentionally stop by showing the different parts of the community and different things where we have in touch with Johnson. Appreciate Teresa making that connection.
I'd like to go, what was what I both said, like the internet, the email, the, obviously that Mac, what is, but I would drop certain colors. And also, and the staff, though, they, it's somewhat, we don't see, they'll say, the way success is the one. So even after that, you're way above good crowd, enjoying, thank you for the 3:00 next to 3:00. Appreciate it.
Second that, that's it.
I'll just, I'll, a little bit more on artwork and everything, staffing and doing activities in the summer. Just, you just mentioned, from the market for the state, and I think that I know what our, these, not quite, time of day or night it is, our staff is out there, and they're doing, doing what needs to be done in our community. Amazing for, for the next morning. Also, the mountain walk this weekend, they had their 1,300, they had almost 1,400 people in that walk this week. That doesn't, that doesn't just happen. So, thanks to all this, that work on creating that success. Another thing I did want to add, and nobody has mentioned this, we had two ribbon cuttings last year. And that is the first time in my memory that we've ever had two ribbon cuttings on one day. So not only were each of them exciting, real, and maybe a bit at, at real, and also at night, but the fact that we had two in one day, I thought was just again, thanks to all the staff that made those events possible as well. There's, those don't just happen either, so appreciate all of the quick work there. With that, is there anything else for the council this evening? Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Where's the, you're filming, I'm watching, we have You made a fairly famous break tonight, John. In an hour. It's not usual.
Take the note back here.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Check it out. With or without.